Our cloth's all way off.
It's right.
Get back your phone.
We've got three minutes.
We're up here telling jokes, Lincoln. We've got fifteen more.
You've got three minutes.
Because he works with me.
I used to pray the cussing.
I'm running on one. I pass.
Yeah, get it.
We just hate the flip back and forth. I brought me one. Especially with this much.
I like that because I can check them off as we go.
Which I get.
I would like to call to order the city of Cherryville's regular city council meeting of Monday, January the thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. At this time, I would ask you, everyone, to please stand for our invocation by Pastor Keith Tuss of Mount Sinai Baptist Church, followed by our pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, for giving our prayer in the Friday night. Before I pray, I'd like to bring Hebrews four sixteen before us, and it says this, "Let us therefore come boldly unto the throne of grace, that we may obtain mercy and find grace to help in time of need." I also say tonight, everyone, please be in prayer for the Pat Kelly family, as they're in need. This is a time of need for them, so we're going to pray together and ask the Lord to bless them as well as this time together. Father, in this place, we come before you for the Pat Kelly family. We're asking, Father, that you just overwhelm this family with your presence, with your mighty hand, and, God, I'm asking a special touch in their life right now to help them through this moment. Lord God, we know that you're in it, you're before it, and you're all around it. So we trust you with their lives, and we just ask now that you be with them. Father, I pray for the mayor and the city council as they have this meeting tonight, Lord, that you just overwhelm them with your Spirit again tonight, Lord. Fill them up to overflowing, and, God, may they call on you for the knowledge and the wisdom they need just to do the things for this city and this people that are in need to be done, Lord. Lord, you've given us a mighty call. You told us where much is given, much is needed from us as your people. So I pray tonight, we are in your will, doing your will, and, God, we are pleasing before you. You move us through this new year of two thousand twenty-five. Make us into the people you need us to be, and, God, calls us to stand out and stand up for the name of Jesus Christ, and it's in your holy name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. At this time, I'm going to ask everyone to remain silent again, as Councilman John Abernathy is going to extend a prayer for the family of our city attorney, Yancy Taylor.
Still rehearsed yet? Heavenly Father, we just lift up Yancy Taylor right now and her family in the passing of her father. Father, we just pray that you would just fill their hearts, that you would have him recall the good times and not dwell on the loss. Father, we just place them in your hands and trust you with their care. We just pray that in these coming days and coming weeks and months and this new year that they will remember the good times and focus on those warm, happy memories again. We just ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. The first item we have on our agenda tonight is to approve the agenda as presented. What is the pleasure of the council on the agenda approval?
We make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
Have a motion in the second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, and there is none. Next item is approval of the minutes of A, our city council regular meeting of December the ninth, two thousand twenty-four. What is the pleasure of the council on approval of the minutes?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes as we read them. I'll second that.
We have a motion in the second to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, and it is unanimous. Next item on the agenda is the mayor's comments. I want to welcome everyone here tonight. I hope everyone's had a good start to the year two thousand twenty-five, and I know everyone here has kept all their New Year's resolutions, so I wish you the best for those that have fallen short on that. Calico Creek Development off Rookway Road has started building, and several houses are in the dry and are expected to be finished by next month. Construction management has stated that around six to ten houses will be ready by April two thousand twenty-five. A ribbon cutting has been scheduled for January twenty-third at eleven-thirty a.m. The Larry and Carolyn Summer Recreation Complex construction is moving along nicely, with the gym and playground area nearing completion. We have, I understand, as today, we have twenty-two teams in the basketball league with approximately two hundred kids signed up to play. The official season will begin tonight. The total cost for the complex was one million, eight hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars. Now, one point five million is being paid through the interlocal agreement with Gaston County, and a hundred and fifty thousand was from the Piedmont Lithium CDA. The city's cost for the project was a hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars of city funds. The city believes that this was a great investment for our citizens. A January twenty-first ribbon cutting is scheduled for eleven o'clock a.m. and has been announced for the grand opening of the new gym. We invite all our citizens to attend this event. Our wastewater superintendent, Larry Wright, has retired as of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Congratulations go to Larry on his retirement, and he will be greatly missed. However, he has agreed to be listed as a part-time employee until one of the other employees can hopefully get certified. Chris Hedick was promoted to superintendent as of January the first, two thousand twenty-five. Planning pots for Uptown have been chosen by the Main Street Design Team. The pots have been ordered and are to be received within six to eight weeks. We are anticipating they will be here for the April planting season. Thanks to Steve Pantin for chairing this important project for our Main Street beautification. American Legion has sent the city a check this week in the amount of forty thousand dollars toward the new turf installed at the high school baseball field. Another ten thousand check will follow later. City staff will begin the yearly budget process soon. Finance Director Dixie Wall and City Manager Brian Dalton will meet with all the department heads to discuss the upcoming budget, and they will present a mid-year review shortly thereafter. Now, this concludes the regular mayor's comments for this evening. However, your mayor has an important announcement to make to all, for all our citizens. And it is with great trepidation and somewhat hesitancy that I make this announcement. After countless prayers, consultations with my medical team, and with many discussions with my immediate family members, I have made the decision to not seek another term as mayor of this great city. I have loved and enjoyed every minute of these past twelve years, and let me emphasize that I have no regrets whatsoever in any decisions that I have made over these many years. I have three things in my life that I truly love, and they are in the order of my God, my family, and my city. And I might also add that I put these last two sometimes in reverse order, as my two daughters will attest to. Our city has made great strides in a positive direction over these eleven-plus years, and I feel this will continue with great leadership that we have in place. I want to say that I have had the best council members that any mayor could have asked for. I want to thank past council members, David Kaiser, Brian Dalton, and Malcolm Parker, as well as current council members, Gary Freeman, John Abernathy, Jill Hewitt, and Janice Hovis. These are the true individuals that have made many tough decisions that have moved our city toward a brighter future. Thanks go out to all our city workers and city staff for their support. Paige Green has been such a great friend and supporter throughout these years and was always available to help me in any capacity. I have worked with great city managers, like Ben Blackburn, Jeff Cash, and now with Brian Dalton, who is doing an incredible job as our current city manager, and he's working closely with our current finance director, Dixie Wall. In closing, I want to wish the next elected Cherryville mayor in November of this year to have as much enjoyment and success as I have had in this leadership role as mayor of the greatest city in North Carolina. Thank you to all the great citizens of Cherryville and the surrounding area for their loyalty and support. Thank you. Thank you. You may be seated. Next item on our agenda is citizens to be heard. Now, any citizen that would like to be heard may do so by coming to this podium, stating your name and address before you speak, and remember, comments will be strictly held to three minutes per person. And, city clerk, do we have anybody to sign up that wants to speak? Okay, I'll open it to anyone here that would like to be heard as citizen, to be heard. Okay? If not, we'll go on to our agenda to automate, and this is special recognition of city employees for years of service. And at this time, I'm going to ask Colby Heffner if he'll come forward. Any family members with you that would like to come? This is one of the greatest things I love to do, because we finally recognize someone for their service to the city, and this certificate is awarded to Colby Heffner in recognition of five years of service to the city of Cherryville, and it's signed by Brian Dalton, city manager, and H.L. Bean, mayor. Congratulations, Colby. You have the floor. If there's anything you want to say.
I'm doing, uh, working with all y'all here at City Chair. We look forward to direct things in the future. And congratulations to you.
Thank you.
You seconded five years.
Thank you.
Always pretty good.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is a resolution in reference to special recognition of Mrs. Pat Sherrill, and I'm going to ask her if she would come forward at this time, and any family member that you would like to come up here. And I'm going to ask councilperson Janice Hovis, who is our liaison to the Cherryville Historical Museum, if she would stand and read the special recognition, or if you just want to stand where you are, Pat, that's fine.
Do you want to come up, Pat? Stand with me and any of your family members with you? That's great. That's wonderful. That's the best part of the family. Well, it's really an honor and a privilege for me, Pat, to thank you tonight, even though I am the newest member of the city council, and I didn't get to work in the museum closely with you for these many, many past years, but I know my Aunt Catherine Goleman's dead. Catherine did, and she talks so fondly about you all the time.
I remember seeing your mother at Chanoa Theater.
Yes, yes. Okay. This is a resolution honoring Pat Sherrill for her many years as a volunteer at the Cherryville Historical Museum, whereas Pat Sherrill has served as a volunteer at the Cherryville Historical Museum since nineteen ninety-five, and whereas originally, Miss Sherrill started doing research and building exhibits at the museum, and whereas Miss Sherrill has been instrumental in working with numerous volunteers over the years to make the Cherryville Historical Museum a success, and whereas Miss Sherrill has had secured grants over the years to make improvements to the Cherryville Historical Museum. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Chairable Mayor and City Council hereby congratulate Miss Pat Sherrill for over thirty years of contributions to the Cherryville Historical Museum, duly adopted the thirteenth day of January, two thousand twenty-five. Paige Green, city clerk, and Henry Lee Bean, mayor. Well, give me, tell me your names.
My name's Colin.
Colin.
Um, I'm Lana.
Lana. Nancy.
Well, we're daughter-in-law's at Bean School.
Okay. So glad to have you, and I'll, there's a lot of board members here, too.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I appreciate everything everybody's done. H.L. has helped us a lot, and Diana, Diana, you should say, I was asked her about doing stuff, and I said, I need this and this and this. She said, H.L. will do it. Right here. Right here. Thank you.
Oh, we appreciate all you've done over all these.
Oh, I appreciate it, and Alice, H.L.'s going to be retiring, so.
Congratulations.
Give me another board member. And your mother, there's not a porch in Cherryville that she didn't come visit and sit on.
Okay, she did. She found the world in you.
Well, I enjoyed her, you know, she would walk up the street, and we'd be sitting on the porch, and I would say, have a seat, come up and have a chair. I would just sit here on the porch.
Yeah, I think you talked her into a lot of things. You have been doing it.
She was always at the museum selling copies, and I had a plaque there somewhere for her. I don't know where it is now, but, you know, I'll go get it back up anyway. Thank you, buddy.
And it's good to know, and I'm not the oldest person that can remember a lot of things that happened in the past in Cherryville, so it's glad to have your knowledge.
I appreciate everything, and people have told me a lot, too, that I remember. I remember a lot of stories, and people don't know everything about everything that's happened here. We had people from the Smithsonian here. We have had people from Dallas and Shield Museum helping us with exhibits. We've had one exhibit that it toured Germany.
Oh, wow.
It was an exhibit on pottery, so it toured Germany. So we've had a lot of good stuff and a lot of good people. Anyway, big favor to have for the museum, Alice has got your name. You're not getting that?
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if Pete, was Pete one of the things he needs president?
It's Pete.
Pete's back there, yeah.
Just on behalf of our museum board, we have several members here that just left. I think Diana White is still here. We appreciate very much Pat's contributions to the museum and a lot of things there because of her, uh, the things that she's done over the years, so we're very grateful for that and so happy that we could recognize you tonight, Pat. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Campbell.
Okay, we'll move on to item ten on our agenda, and that's special recognition of the Cherryville High School Power Players, and we have, I'm not sure if athletic director's not with us tonight, so we do have Miss Emily Winters.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for having us again this month. Our power players and athletic director were unable to attend tonight due to practices and game schedule, but just to keep it with them on, we have our January Power Players for girls' basketball is Rayleigh Gidney, and boys' basketball, Darius Pullen, and they have some games this week, so be sure to head to next to the gym and check them out.
Okay, thank you. And I might add that Emily is the Piedmont Lithium Community Relations Manager, and they do sponsor the Power Players. Okay. Okay, our next item on the agenda is consideration of appointments or reappointments to the chamber board, and if you'll go to page eight. Put it up here. I know the two people that want to be reappointed is Johnny Brown with Allstate and Emily, who just, yeah, she's still here, Emily Winters with Piedmont Lithium. Emily Winters, uh, with Piedmont Lithium. Uh, what is the council pleasure on reappointment of these two?
Make a motion to go ahead and reappoint these two people, Johnny Brown and Emily Winters, to the, uh, back to the, what was it, Chamber of Commerce?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to, uh, do the reappointments to the chamber board of the two individuals, Johnny Brown and Emily Winters. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, there is none. Congratulations, Johnny Brown and Emily Winters. Okay, next item is consideration to set a date for a public hearing for February the third, 2025. Uh, and this is, uh, in reference to, uh, public hearing for a change on zoning.
It's a special use permit.
Special use permit, okay? And that will be discussed. We just, all we need to do tonight is set the date, which would be February the third, 2025. Uh, do I have a motion from council?
I move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to set the date of February the third, 2025, for a public hearing on the re-zoning, okay? Uh, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it is unanimous. Next item is consideration of a contract with Alliance Code Enforcement. Our city manager, Brian Dalton, will lead us through this. That starts on page ten of your agenda packets through page fifteen.
Yes, mayor, council, uh, Richard Edelman and I have been discussing this for a while now. As you well know, Richard is technically, he is a part-time employee. Uh, he has to work under a thousand hours per year, uh, by retirement standards. He can't work over that. So with doing all the zoning and all the growth that we have with the neighborhoods and zoning permits, it's getting to where it's, it's just too much to keep up with doing all the zoning plus doing all the code enforcement, which is the high grass, the junk cars, you know, the dilapidated housing, all those things. So we've reached out and spoken to Alliance Code Enforcement. And I put a sheet on each of your desk, uh, some of the communities that they already have contract with, well, they're, they're going the code enforcement. They handle, you know, if there's high grass, they handle sending the letter. They handle getting it cut. They handle the fees. Uh, if they have to put a lien on a property, they handle filing the paperwork. Uh, so we're looking at going into a contract with them that would be effective as of February the first of this year, and it would run through the end of June. So we have a good test period to see if this is a service that we like. Uh, and what it is, is it's ten hours per week. Uh, so for ten hours a week, they do the letters, they do whatever. You know, one of the projects that we've talked with them about is, uh, if you know the, the old store that's down here on Mountain Street, near the middle school. You know, it's been overgrown, it needs some attention, you know? Starting to look at projects like that, you know? And they take the ball and they start and, and start the process. Like, the owner of that store in particular, you know, they live in New York City, so they're gonna have a lot of letters they gotta send, they gotta do all that. So it's gonna take some time to get all that processed. But, but bring them on board to let Richard worry about the zoning and the growth, and we let them worry about the code enforcement when we move forward. And like I said, it would be in effect starting February the first, it runs through the end of June, and then we'll have a good, clear picture, do we wanna continue this procedure or not? And it's still a lot cheaper than, than having a full-time zoning slash code enforcement officer. If you look at what we're paying Richard as a part-time employee and what we'd be paying Alliance as a contractor.
We'll go through Richard as far as identifying properties that they do.
I mean, it, it can go either way. It can go through Richard, it can go through, they can, you know, go straight to Alliance. And it probably works both ways according, when we met with, uh, the owner of the property, Brandon Emery there. Uh, Brandon is a, is a former police officer. Uh, so he started this business and it's kinda just blew up. And like I said, there's twenty-eight communities there. The closest that around us that, uh, they serve right now is Ranlo. They do all the code enforcement for Ranlo. So what he's looking at going is bringing that guy, that guy walk, do Ranlo ten hours a week, and then he gives us ten hours a week. Uh, so that same individual would serve, uh, the city of Cherryville for the code enforcement. But you could make a complaint straight to them, you can make the complaint to us and Richard forwards it, or I forward, or whoever forwards it to Alliance, and they go from there. Plus, talking to Brandon, what they do a lot, I know when we met with him, uh, about two months ago, he must have got here early and he rode around town and looked at certain things. And he pointed out several violations that, you know, if they ride around and see them, then they initiate the contact.
They will do that and won't just be based on complaints.
And it basically takes the politics out, out of, uh, code enforcement.
Yes, sir.
I like the way it sounds.
Yes, sir. And if you look at the contract, it's, uh, like I said, it's ten hours a week guaranteed, and we'll provide them somewhere in city hall, you know? Probably, uh, Recreation Director Lance Hudson's office will provide them somewhere where they can come if they need to do some work or if they need to do something like that. And they can come there and set their, set their computer up and do whatever they need to do.
Okay, I think you explained it very well. Does any council member have any questions for city manager in regards to the contract with Alliance Code?
I did, but Brian answered them all.
There we go. Good job there.
Yes, it's fifty dollars per hour, ten hours a week, so five hundred dollars a week. And like I said, it never goes over that unless we initiate it and say, hey, give us some more hours.
And I love the fact that we got five months to fill them out. We don't have to renew the contract after five months.
That's very good.
That's, the saving the money and all, I think it's a no-brainer. But, uh, I would be, would need a motion from council to accept this contract with Alliance Code Enforcement.
Make a motion that we enter into this contract with Alliance Code Enforcement to handle all of our coding issues.
Second.
All right, to have a motion in a second to enter into and accept the contract with Alliance Code Enforcement, uh, on behalf of the city of Cherryville. Uh, any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, and there is none.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item fourteen. This is, uh, consideration of Architectural Review Board's proposal for two murals. Downtown Director David Daye and Vicki Sperlin, uh, has been going through this, and this is pages sixteen through twenty-four in your agenda packets. And it includes pictures of what they hoped the murals will look like. Uh, so I'll hand it over to David Daye at this time. And we can, if you got any questions, we can ask David about it.
Thank you, Mayor. As required by our zoning instructions from city council, uh, the Architectural Review Board may add on December eighteenth. Uh, the application was presented to us two days before, so we met. Uh, Mr. O'Leary wants to put these two murals. Uh, one was originally looked at going on the American Legion Building, but that was not, didn't work out so well. So he's gonna put that one on the one-fourteenth West, that's over there, the building beside the fish box. The other one is, uh, was approved in, uh, by the Gaston County to put on the back of the bleachers, I'm, excuse me, back of the dugout there on Pink Street. So you see both samples. The ARB looked at it, looked at the theme, looked at the, uh, the sketches and the drawings, proposed drawings, and it was a hundred percent unanimously approved to bring to you guys for a final decision.
Okay. Does any council members have any questions for David in regards to the two murals?
I'm happy. Uh, American Legion was okay on one for the dugout, and the county signed off on it, too.
Yes.
Everybody.
She checked with the owner and got their permission, they signed off on it. And that's noted on their, uh, on their application. She got approval.
The one for the, uh, the, uh, one forty-four, is it West?
The one-fourteen.
One-fourteen.
Uh-huh.
Okay, now that, that mural really has to do with American Legion as military and veterans.
Yes.
And so I think that's wonderful, that Mr. O'Leary is willing to put that on, on the side of his building.
And his building's got, I think it's five sections.
Yeah.
And this was designed for five sections. And so that was one of the reasons he wanted to put it there. And also being where someone, you know, we're doing more work on First Street than their lots, the park that we've updated, uh, now the cherry pit's there, it'll give more people opportunity to walk there, walk over there and explore and look at the mural, be able to read the detailed work that's going in it.
It's beautiful.
Give a great asset to the city we felt.
It's lights over.
I don't know at this point. They've gotta do some work to that building, Gary, and I'm sure they will, 'cause he's really, he likes to have things lit. Uh, and they're looking at doing some lighting in other areas, so I'm, I'm sure that will probably be a feature that he adds to the building.
I think, you know, we were excited about it, American Legion, about doing it, but there was a lot of things that you could read on here. And it was a little bit worrying that traffic flow right there, somebody would get the kind of concentrating on it, but it's absolutely beautiful. First, uh, once we have seen, it was really gonna be perfect for it.
And where it is, people can see it.
It'll be much, much better.
A lot better and get the, uh, the meaning behind each one of the sections.
People walking can really study it and see what they'll.
If there's no cost to the city, it's all paid.
Right. Okay. Any other questions for David? If not, uh, I would entertain a motion from council to accept the proposal for the two murals as presented.
So that is a motion.
Okay, motion in a second, at the same time? That's great.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, and it is unanimous. Thank you, David.
For children and veterans, say yes. Well, John is, I mean, Gary is also, so love it. We do like it.
Okay, next item is consideration of recommendation to reduce the speed limit on Highway one fifty east, which is also known as the Lincoln Town Highway. And that's on pages twenty-five and twenty-six in your agenda packets. And I hope everyone knows exactly where this stretch is. It's basically from where we have forty-five.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's from the Country Club entrance off one fifty to just past Walmart there. So what we're wanting to do is change it from fifty-five down to forty-five and it be consistent throughout.
And basically, it's for safety reasons?
Obviously, you know, we've had.
Several bad wrecks right in here.
I know of two, two extremely bad wrecks over the past year that have happened there. So we're hoping reducing the speed.
And all three.
Dog tree.
Okay.
And what we'll do is if you, if you decide to approve the recommendation, we'll get up, we'll get in touch with DOT and, and send it to them that y'all have recommended this. And I, I feel like they'll definitely do it.
How many lines is that?
Four.
So it's four lines now, and we're still having wrecks on there?
There's so much coming out into it, Brian. How are they planning on?
Well, they're still looking at some other things. Uh, you know, they've been looking at a stoplight potentially down near Ferguson's where, uh, Big Bang Road comes up. But with the angle of it, I don't know how they'll, how they'll do that, to be honest. Uh, we're gonna have to wait and see. But that, their engineers are aware and they're looking at places they could potentially put a stoplight there. But I don't know if it's gonna be possible at this time.
They could. And our police department is represented here tonight.
Do you have any comments on?
No, I mean, I, I know personally, two wrecks that, uh, that was popping about, they were pretty bad.
What would be your estimate approximately, what is the distance between there? What is it, uh?
From the forty-five where it's, where the Walmart is now?
Uh-huh. No, from the Country Club entrance to Walmart.
Maybe half a mile.
I didn't think it was that, that much. Okay, that's not far.
Is that gonna be hard to enforce?
Pat moving on.
Okay. Okay, you say so.
About how long would it take to get our, uh, speed limit signs changed? That'd be public work.
Yeah, the state would do that.
Oh, that's state road, anyway.
Yeah, that's why your recommendation just goes to DOT and then they decide. But they'll take your recommendation.
Andrew held his hand up.
Oh, Andrew, did you have a question?
I worked that gate out there at Ferguson's. Fifty-five is way too fast down there.
Okay, that's good to know.
It's about impossible to just about turn left there. See a lot of cars go down like you trying to come back.
Oh, okay.
So it all needs to, yeah, it needs to be possibly forty-five all the way out.
That's what we're gonna, that's what, this will do. This will make it forty-five throughout.
Sounds good.
The only thing I would say is I'm sure we're gonna get feedback from the trucking industry saying it's slowing down, they're moving freight and, and stuff. But we do that anywhere. I know we got some of that plaque from Modern Palmer's when we dropped the zone there, but, uh, it's, it's safety should be first, I guess. So I would need a motion from council to vote to reduce the speed limit, or at least send that recommendation to the, uh, DOT, Department of Transportation.
I'll make a motion to drop it to forty-five. Safety reason.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to reduce the speed limit in that stretch from fifty-five to forty-five. Any other questions by council at this time? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it is unanimous. Okay, we'll move to item sixteen, and this is consideration of the proposed new cemetery fees. City clerk Paige Green will lead us through that. That's page twenty-seven through twenty-nine in your agenda packets.
Mayor and council, by this time, um, usually we've got these already approved to be effective January the first. However, I did not get this until late into the month of December. So that's why I'm giving it to you now, because we didn't have a work session for me to show these to you. Um, usually, uh, Richard's increases Green and Son, who does our grave digging, is five or ten dollars this month. This year, they're a little bit higher as things have gone up with everything. Um, the prices that I'm showing here are the proposed, I just put a question mark beside the grave fees. I didn't know how y'all felt about that. I did not increase those at all. I left them what they have been. Where you'll see the rate increases, proposed rate increases are on the cremation grave opening, the baby grave opening, adult grave opening, and oversized adult grave opening. You'll also see an increase, um, with the additional fees that are charged to have your loved one buried on the following holidays, New Year's, Independence Day, Memorial Day, and Labor Day. Another change that Green and Son has, um, is passing on is funeral scheduled to be at, to begin after three-thirty PM, where incur an additional charge of five hundred dollars.
Is that something new?
No, no, but it, it used to be four o'clock. But they're getting later and later. And he doesn't have lights and all to be out in the cemetery to cover a grave. So I think that's why Richard is pushing, I know that's why he's pushing that, uh, to maybe encourage people to, you know, if you think back years ago, everybody did them eleven, twelve, two, Pete can attest to this. And they do seem to be getting later. So, um, he has increased that a hundred dollars. Um, due to the increased demand for Saturday and Sunday funerals, um, he started this last year, uh, an additional fee of a hundred and twenty-five dollars. And he's bumping that this year to a hundred and fifty, in which that's just something we pass on to the customer. That's what Richard's gonna charge us, so we'll just pass that on to the customer if you see fit. Um, and of course, we have the holidays that we, he has the holidays, he does not do any burials on. Um, also went to page twenty-nine and just made those same changes there for, um, the columbariums and the two-by-two cremation, um, section of the cemetery.
Okay, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, it just now hit me, or I would have brought it before you earlier, Paige. But, uh, when you got that, you've got cremation grave. when you got down, you got cremation grave opening.
Mm-hmm.
Could we amend that to say cremation and aquamation? Because some people are doing the aquamation now.
They are, um.
Or is that considered a part of cremation?
Do y'all do the aquamation?
We are not doing it right now, uh, but we are still offering it as a service.
But am I correct in saying this, Pete? With the aquamation, there's not anything left, is there?
Oh, yes, more.
Yeah, there's more.
There's more. What are folks doing with, with their, uh, loved ones cremains out of the aquamation?
So just the same thing they would do.
Burying them?
Cremated remains, yes, a burial, or keeping them, or scattering them, or whatever the case may be.
Maybe that is something we need to add to this.
That's what I was thinking, because it is, I think it is cheaper than cremation by about a hundred dollars or something.
Could be, it, it runs pretty close, yes.
How many have you had in a year?
Water, high-pressure water. And there's no fire to it.
Right.
But you get more remains, uh, more of the ashes or whatever it actually.
I don't wanna sound morbid, but, but will that fit into our columbarium spaces?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll fit in an urn just like anything else.
How many have you had in the last year?
Crushes of the bones.
I don't know, I would say.
I know we've not been, or you've not told me if there, if, if it's in cremation form, you've not said to me, you know, it's aquamation, but.
Right. I think we're very blunt out there. Uh, I have to look back, but I think we're very blunt as an aquamation.
Now, are all the funeral homes doing it, carpenters and?
Uh, I'm not sure about that.
Okay.
I'm sure if anybody would want it offered, I'm sure that any funeral service would try to find a way to support the family in that decision.
Okay, so you're saying just add the word aquamation?
That would be my suggestion.
Contract with to do it, just send me the question.
We did have a unit at our funeral home in Fawson, and it had some issues with it, and, uh, I think instead of going to the expense of having it renewed or worked on or whatever, they've had so much trouble with it, they may just, uh, sort of sub it out, so to speak.
I just know some people have issues with the fire. In cremation, and this does away with fire, there's no fire to it, it's just water, even though it's high-pressure.
I've got a question about, now that we're moving it back to three-thirty, does the fee start, you know, the funeral's scheduled for three o'clock, it's gonna go past three-thirty?
Yes, if the funeral starts at three-thirty, he will not charge that fee.
It starts at three o'clock, and it's gonna run, by the time you get to the cemetery, that fee will not change actually.
Right, okay.
But if you have a four o'clock service.
Service, then you're gonna have that fee.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay, uh.
Yeah.
I have a question, which I should have the answer, but I do not know.
Okay, that's fine. Council, council member, hold this, you have a question?
I do. Sherwood Memorial Courtyard, would, would you tell me where that is?
Yes, I will. When we installed the columbariums there at the fire department on the other side of the, um, cedar trees, we also put in two-by-two cremains section there, and then you have your columbariums, and then we have an area for scattering, and we named that the Sherwood Courtyard.
Okay, well.
It's where, uh, the statue with Jesus's hands.
Just that section, Janice.
You know, there's two statues with Jesus's hands. It's the first one, the one closest to Highway one fifty. It's right there at the columbarium.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so if we add the word aquamation there, that leave the price is the same?
Yeah, I, I would.
I mean, 'cause it basically is the same thing, okay?
Okay, I would need a motion from council to, uh, accept these proposed seminary, cemetery fees with, uh, the amendment for cremation slash aquamation.
Make a motion to approve the proposed seminary fees as presented with the addition of the word aquamation.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
I have a motion in a second, any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion to accept, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, there is none, okay? We'll go to item seventeen, consideration of a resolution to approve fire department vehicle surplus. And city manager, Brian Dalton, will lead us through that.
Yes, please.
And that's on page thirty through thirty-three.
Yes, Mayor, Council, uh, if you see there, this is one of the old white hybrid vehicles that we have had, that just can't seem to go away. But this is one of the last ones that we, uh, Assistant Chief Heffner has been driving this vehicle for probably the past two years, maybe, and it's getting to be where it's a, it's a maintenance issue. So what we're looking at doing is, one of the vehicles that we were going to turn in from the police department, um, the lease program, we found that we could buy this vehicle for four thousand dollars roughly. So what we're gonna, and it's only got seventeen thousand miles on it. So what we're gonna do, instead of turning that lease in, uh, we're gonna keep this vehicle, buy it outright for roughly four thousand dollars, and then we'll move that vehicle to Assistant Chief Heffner, and then we're just asking to declare this one surplus to put on Gov. deals and try to recruit some of those funds.
This one will be sold.
This one would be sold, yes, ma'am.
Okay, any questions from any council member? If not, I would need a motion from council to approve the disposition of the fire department vehicle as discussed.
I'll make that motion, second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the disposition of fire department vehicle as presented. Uh, all in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, and it is unanimous, okay? Move to eighteen, other business, do I have any other business from council at this time that they would like to bring before the public?
I've got one thing. We mentioned lights on murals while I go. Uh, I was talking with Patrick O'Leary and Vicki Sperlin today about the lights on the mural there, the corner of First and Mountain. Have you figured out a way to do that?
Well, the last time I talked to Mr. O'Leary and Vicki, they were gonna get in touch with, uh, Gary Dellinger, and Gary Dellinger was gonna look at how he could get power to get some lights. But what we were gonna do is, uh, I don't know, if you, if you look at the mural, there's, there's some meters there on the wall right there where the mural is. And what we talked about going is just running it through that meter that's, that existing building there, and not adding another meter for the lights, and it'd just be within that meter. But I agree with Vicki, there would be problems there. You know, if somebody ever gets a utility bill that spikes, they're gonna say it's because of those lights. You know, we was gonna give a credit and pay, say, twenty dollars or whatever it might be. But, so we kinda went away from that. So they were gonna talk to Gary Dellinger to see about running another service to get some lights, but then the city would, would keep that bill up. We wouldn't bill them for just two lights on a mural. Uh, but that was the last discussion of it.
Is Mr. O'Leary on that building?
He does.
Yeah, he'd give them all that building, cause for his tenants.
Yeah.
Right.
To be separate.
Yeah.
So we wouldn't have a problem.
But I, I do agree with Vicki there, that's probably not, I mean, that's what we talked about when we met one day, probably a month ago, maybe.
What's the next step?
I'm waiting on them. They, they're supposed to contact Gary Dellinger, and then Gary's gonna see about how he can get power and get some lights on it.
All right, good, okay, I love that.
I think they had suggested maybe going on top of the building and shooting it.
I think top and bottom, that's what they was gonna do.
Okay. Um, any other business from council? Okay, uh, we have anything from staff?
Nothing further from staff. Uh, do you have basketball games, if anybody wants to go to watch the grand opening of the gym tonight for the basketball game?
Okay.
I'd have to.
All right, that brings us to item nineteen, and this, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion in two seconds to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, there is none, we are adjourned. Yeah, that is. Next one. Next one will be a super awesome. Do we meet on super? We'll, we'll have a, have a, have a, a work session.